Hello, I'm Pastor Dave and this is session two of our Acts Bible study. And this week we're looking at Acts chapter four through seven. Now at this point, hopefully you've read it, if not, it much of this will make sense as you read it. But as we look or continue the book of Acts, this chapter four starts right after Peter and John, Peter spoke at Solomon's portico in the temple. And Peter and John are brought before the council. Now because Peter and John spoke at the temple, this was attracted a lot of public attention. And they did this at the court of the Gentiles, which was the busiest. There are other courts, including the court of women, court of the women. But it was the court of the Gentiles that was accessible to anyone. This is where the money changers were, this is where the buying and selling of animals or sacrifices occurred. And it contained the royal porch and the Solomon porch where Peter spoke. And as Peter and John spoke, it attracted the attention, including the attention from the priests. Now the priests were Sadducees. And Sadducees did not believe in the resurrection or any resurrection. And they were also kind of the collaborators with the Roman authorities. They wanted to maintain the peaceful status quo. So they arrested Peter and John to bring them in because to them, they were provocateurs, kind of stoking rebellion. But it really gets into the question that part of what their issue was. Because it wasn't just Peter and John speaking, a miracle had occurred. And that led to their questioning and they're questioned by the full Sanhedrin. Now this is the same group that did Jesus's trial after his arrest in the garden. And this was a council of seventy-one individuals, the high priest as well as seventy other priests. And basically for all intensive purposes, it was a group of Sadducees. Although for the sounds of it, there were a few Pharisees thrown in. And the scribes who were there and present, they were basically the experts on the traditional law, which is where you kind of get the Pharisees coming in. Because the Pharisees were the fanatics for the written law. But here you have this trial and this was not going to be a fair trial. The position of high priest was, for lack of a better way of saying it, was a hereditary position. And full-blown political intrigue along with it. With bribery and corruption and who got to be the high priest. Between thirty-seven B.C. and sixty-seven A.D., there were twenty-eight high priests. Even though officially it wasn't a hereditary position, officially, twenty-two of the twenty-eight priests, high priests came from four families. So this is the environment Peter and John are going into. And it's not a friendly one. And we can see it by their questioning. And this is important when you look at verse seven or chapter four, verse seven. "By what power or in what name have you done this?" They're asking about power. I mean, this is similar to the questioning of Christ. You can go back into Luke and see this. They're trying to control the mechanisms of power and try to figure out how they did this. And Peter's reaction, we can juxtapose to Luke chapter twenty-one and his reactions at Jesus's trial when he denied Christ three times. Here, he doesn't deny anything. He says, "By whom he did it? It was by the name of Jesus Christ. He testifies to Jesus's death, his resurrection, and the fulfillment of the Old Testament prophecies." And the fact that Peter could heal the man was evidence that Jesus was not dead but alive. Because how could a dead man heal? And really, when we look at Peter's defense through verse twelve, we can take some lessons of how we should be in our faith of being bold that the resurrection is true. Be bold out of love of neighbor and remembering the exclusivity of the gospel. That it's almost insulting to Jesus to say, "There's another way but Him." And being sincere in our faith. But as the trial continues, we see the attacks that they have on Peter and John and also the faith as a whole. Where they look at Peter and John and go, "What do these people know? These are fishermen from Galilee. There's a bit of snobbery because they're the educated ones and these guys have no formal education." It's kind of a rush to authority type situation. And also we see the threats that they're making of what they say that they can do to John and Peter. And that's often how our attacks against us come into of kind of some ways and threats. But also really in kind of questioning whether we're educated enough to understand. But Peter retorts this with the undeniable facts that a man was cured, you can't disprove that. He shows loyalty to God by basically pointing out, "You can do whatever you want, I'm not going against God." And basically the fact that they were expressing their personal encounter with Christ. They had seen these things, they were there for it, it's what they knew to be true. And they were bold in their faith. But part of the issue here is they're kind of talking past each other. Because Peter and John are focusing on the saving of souls, for lack of a better way of saying it. The Sanhedrin was looking on how to save power. And all they could do was threaten them because a miracle had occurred, people had seen it. They can't deny that that had happened. But they couldn't bring themselves to affirm the resurrection of Christ because in their minds, resurrection cannot happen. And all they could do was threaten them, but at the same time, none of them are saved. Unlike Peter's sermon at Pentecost, this one was not affected because they could not bring themselves to respond. And even with the threats, Peter looked at them and reminded them that he's going to follow God, not earthly rulers. And as it continues, they're released. And they returned to the church and they knew what had happened. And Peter and John recounted what had happened to them. And this is kind of a pattern that repeats. That looking through everything, when reacting to the struggles in this world, they would go to pray and they would almost respond physically to the fact that prayers were answered. That God was at work. And really when we look at how the church reacted to this whole situation, and there's more, there was more in this in the sermon, and we'll get into that there. But we can see with Peter of John and John and their reaction, and really the church's reaction was that they're convicted of the power of God and that God is at work in this world. They're convinced that there's no point in rebelling against God. They remember what Christ did for them, his suffering and death and resurrection. And they prayed for the courage to respond and receive the gifts of the Holy Spirit. This is how the church really did act to these situations. And really at this point, we get almost a reminder of what was at the end of chapter two. There's a lot of parallels between chapter two and chapter four, if you want to go down that rabbit hole. Of a miraculous event, a speech and the reaction and how the church reacted. And one of the things we really had to look at when we see everything in common. And I know in the Zoom chat for this, we had talked a little bit about how this looks like with the church holding things in common. And really, part of this goes off the Christian character that a Christian cannot accept that people are hungry. And they can't forget about it, they feel obligated to do something. And also the idea that as that their witness to the faith was important, not just words but indeed. Which meant they had a responsibility for one another inside the church. And they had the desire to actually share what they had. It was a shift in outlook on possessions. It wasn't a top-down declaration of, "You will do this." It was actual charity, which is something that an individual wants to do without being forced. And this kind of shows the power of the gospel, that it actually is a unifying force, it's not a divisive force. That also, the sharing isn't just about possessions. We kind of focus in on that because of who we are and the world in which we live. But it was sharing the joys, it was sharing burdens, it was living life with one another. And part of this did reflect Jewish tradition as well. If you look in Deuteronomy fifteen, you can find that, you know, there is an obligation to the needy of the community. And the church is meant to do that. And really, when it comes down to the possessions, it was more about the idea of what matters more? Does your stuff matter more or does God, the faith community matter more? And how you answer that question impacts how you relate to the other. If possessions matter more, sharing everything in common is terrifying. If God matters more, your possessions don't mean as much. And so it's just a different way of looking at things. Plus, we can see in this passage that the church was full of different people from different socio-economic backgrounds. There were needy and there were also the affluent. And here we have Joseph Barnabas, who's actually mentioned twenty-three times in the book of Acts. But here, he is wealthy, he has a field, he sells it and gives it to the apostles to distribute as needed for the church. And we're going to get the comparison in a minute when we hit chapter five. But this kind of shows the understanding of where our possessions lie, so too is our heart. Whereas Bishop William Willaman noted when he quoted Ernest Becker, "That when traditional sources of immorality faded in the West, money and wealth took the place of God." And this is why we have a struggle with this passage. But we also see this was always, the struggle isn't anything new. Because immediately in chapter five, we get Ananias and Sepphorah. And they were also members of the church, they were affluent. And they saw the work of Joseph Barnabas and sought to do the same thing. And they did the, except they didn't give it all to the disciples, they held some back. And Sepphorah knew what Ananias did. And there's some good news in this for us because it shows from the very beginning, the church had imperfect people in it, just like it does today. But it also shows us kind of what sin is at this point. Because you can look at this and go, "What was their sin?" Well, they lied. And when you look at what sin against God is, there's really three things a sin is. Or sin against God can be. It can be a failure of diligence. It can be a failure to use our talents. It can be a failure of truth. And when we look at the words, what happened here, we see that because they withheld and lied. And I found this quote from Justin Martyr, Bishop Willaman used it in his commentary. But it comes from Justin Martyr in his first apology, chapter fourteen verses two and three. "Where once we coveted most greedily the wealth, we who once coveted most greedily the wealth and the fortune of others, now place in common the goods we possess, dividing them with all the needy." That was one of the hallmarks of the early church was that shift from greed to basically coveting God instead of wealth. And Ananias and Sepphorah were kind of give us that warning. Because when we look at them, they kind of give a sham holiness. No one forced them to sell their field and give. But they said what they were going to do and then purposely gave less. They wanted the praise of Barnabas without Barnabas's compassion for others. They lied about their charity, which really demonstrates the fallen nature of humanity. They were greedy. There's actually some of the same words used about greed here. Is used to pilfer or embezzle, basically taking what's not yours. They were deceivers, they purposely said what they were going to do and then did not do it, but didn't tell anyone. They were instruments of Satan because Satan had influence in their heart, that's where the greed kept prepped in. And they were spiritual grievers because they lied to the Holy Spirit. I mean, that was part of the issue here. Because when we look at what happened, their punishment in verses five through eleven, they both fell down dead after they committed it, after they lied to God. And when we look at this, it's important to remember that this came from God, not Peter. God did the punishment, not the apostles. But it does serve to remind us that professing believers would be held accountable. And the punishment for sin is, is really serious. I mean, the penalty of sin is death, not always instantaneous. And because Sepphorah shared, was not an innocent bystander, she shared in the conspiracy, she shared the fate. And this does go back to a sermon from a few weeks ago where we talked about fear and love of God. There is a necessity for a healthy fear of God, even if it just helps keep us in check. But that also helps lead us to repent our sins, so we do not suffer the same fate. And if you do want some fun with this, you can compare Ananias and Sepphorah to the rich young man in Luke chapter twelve verses sixteen through twenty-one. And how Jesus grieves when he can't give everything up. But as we continue in chapter five, we get an account of what was done. The miraculous signs, the wonders, the new converts. And we start to see how the church was acting because the church tended to be together. They tend to go to the Solomon Colonnade at the temple. They gathered in public, they didn't hide away, and they were effective. They had an active healing ministry. And really, that helps remind us of what the church is supposed to be. The church is supposed to make the bad good. And this is a passage we can compare back into the Gospels as well. But we also see that the church was attractive because the multitudes are being drawn to Christ. The humble were loved, people were cared for, people were healed. And this really does fit back with the Beatitudes of Matthew five about the need of coming with a broken spirit to Christ and to be healed. And these acts get repeated over and over. But what's interesting is because of these acts are happening, the council's reacting. At the end of chapter three and then chapter four, we had this happen, here it happens again. And the second arrest was inevitable. Because Peter and John, the apostles and the church did not stop doing what they were told to stop doing. And to the Sanhedrin, these apostles were heretics, and they risked disturbing the peace, which would threaten the social order as Rome would respond. But we have to remember about the Sanhedrin and the high priest that these are people who didn't believe in miracles, did not believe in resurrection, did not believe in angels. They were heavily focused on temporal power and connections with the rulers of the earth. And the apostles in the church were challenging their status, their beliefs. And they also didn't like being accused of crucifying Christ. And we can get some warnings from their actions because really a pride. And pride is sometimes seen as one of the deadly sins, especially in Catholic theology. But we see the pride in the Sanhedrin because they had an intellectual pride because they were too foolish to believe. They had a social pride because they weren't going to risk public alienation. And they had a family pride because they weren't going to damage their relationships with family. And these are shown even in people. To this day, there are people who will not come to Christ or will not fully accept the gospel for those very reasons. They don't want to lose their social status, they don't want to lose their family or friends. Or they think they're too smart to do so. And jealousy can lead to a lot of sin and we always have to be on guard with it. But in the midst, we also get the reminder of we have an angel appear. And angel is short for, is based off the Greek word Angelos, which means messenger. And really, this is a miracle. I mean, anytime an angel would show up is a miraculous event, but they're told, the angels tell Peter, "Tell the church to continue to preach and resume immediately." But this is one of those moments of civil disobedience, it's hard to do. And this is something we can struggle with. But we also see how important it is to use every opportunity to share the gospel. Even when we're being opposed and even when authorities are using tricks and playing games with us. But the characteristics of these early men and women of God was that they were people of courage, they were people of principle, and they had a clear understanding of their duty and function. But as they go to the trial, they don't know, the Sanhedrin don't know what to do with them because, again, miracles are happening, there's witnesses to these events. But it's upsetting the social order and their authority. And in them was a Pharisee, Gamaliel. And he was one, he didn't have political ambition, he didn't have the Sanhedrin wealth. But he was one of the most respected rabbis of the time, he knew the law. And these were men who did, Pharisees get a bad rap, but there were only about six thousand of them ever, at any one time. And they lived very austere lives, they were very focused on living the faithful life. And Gamaliel was very well, more than respected, but loved. He had a degree of tolerance, he didn't see Greek culture as inherently sinful or forbidden. And he kind of would intervene to keep the Sanhedrin from going too far. And he pointed out, this is where the struggle they're at. because he wanted to keep the Sanhedrin from acting opposed to God. He cited, he did cite others, but basically he was using examples from Theodas, who had been a rebel leader. And Judas, who rebelled against Corinnaeus in six A.D. over taxes. And it was kind of one of those things of what do you do with someone if you don't know whether or not they're doing God's will? Because if they're doing God's will and you stop it, then you're opposing God's will. And only a fool would stop God. And some can speculate, Luke included this as a means of saying, "Don't, just let the church alone. If they're doing God's work, you don't want to oppose it." But also, it's one of those things that if they're not doing God's work, it'll peter out on its own. And the apostles rejoiced at all that was happening in this. Because every time they were put before trial, they could demonstrate their loyalty to Christ, they could share the gospel. And in the midst of all this, including the flogging, they rejoiced that they were worthy to suffer with Christ and that they could continue to preach. It seems very odd, but for them to suffer like Christ was a reward. And it wasn't seen as a humiliation and they wouldn't stop doing what Christ told them to do. But as we move into chapter six, we're getting into conflict within the church. Now this is one of our shorter chapters. Because at this point, the church was growing, people were coming to faith, it was growing and growing and growing. And anytime there's growth, there's conflict. Because sometimes failure is not because of sin, sometimes it's human limitations. And as we saw in chapter one, you have twelve apostles overseeing the church. But now, you're having thousands of people in Jerusalem that are part of this church. Not all the disciples or apostles were still there. Actually, they were still all there at this point, they hadn't all dispersed yet. And there's also the social conflict between basically the Aramaic speaking parts of the church and the Greek speaking parts of the church, or the Hellenized church. And there was always tension between kind of the Hebrew side of the faith and the Hellenized part. Because the Hellenized part also had Hellenized Jews, also proselytes, Gentiles who converted. Meanwhile, the more traditional Jews spoke Aramaic, they tended to reject the Hellenization and the Greek influence. And this came to be over the biblical mandate to care for the widows. Now in the handout, I'm going to have eight, actually it's more than eight passages of scripture that remind us to care for the widows. This was a Jewish mandate because widows without sons, without husbands could fall by the wayside. So the community would care for them. And this came about and still does happen in Jewish circles. One is the custom of the kapa, which is two officials who act as the alms givers. They would, at this time, would go around the markets plus go to homes to collect funds to be given that immediate afternoon, both to people who had temporary need and those who had permanent need. And those with permanent need got enough for fourteen days of food. Or fourteen meals, which is enough to survive for two weeks. There's also the custom of temhu or tray, my Hebrew is horrible. And that was a house-to-house collection presented to those in need. And the conflict arose because some of the Hellenized Jewish widows were complaining that they weren't receiving anything. Because they were looked down upon because they weren't the Aramaic speaking Jews, they were being neglected. Meanwhile, the apostles, who have a lot of other stuff going on, were going, basically, lack of a better way of saying this, "We can't handle this on our own." And that's not what they were called to do. This gets into God's calling of leaders that sometimes leaders are forced to do things that were not called to do. And that leads to tension, it leads to things not happening as they should be. And it does give us an expansion of Christian leadership beyond being the apostles to those who are called to do this. And we get the reminder, really in verse five, verse six, of what we would eventually see that the church is one body with many parts. And there's always people chosen out from out of the congregation to serve. And the apostles delegate the task, they're overseeing the church, they're not doing the work of the church. And this is something the modern church has struggled with, with professional clergy, that it's the staff's job, not everyone's. And we see this later in First Timothy, chapter three, where you see that pastors manage the household of God. Manage is different than do. But they ultimately deserve to pick seven men of good repute to actually do this work. And we get their names. And there's Stephen, Philip, Proctorus, Nicander, Timon, Parmenius, and Nicholas. These are the first deacons, basically. This is the start of the diaconate ministry, which is a servant-based ministry. And if we want to get into doctrine, you can look at the difference between the global Methodist church of elder versus deacon. And there are separate ministries to them. But also, these are people that were chosen and it would be a special honor to do so. And what's also interesting is this is the incorporation of the Hellenized Jews in to the church. Including Nicholas, who may have been a Gentile proselyte into to the church, including Nicholas, who may have been a Gentile proselyte into the church. So we're seeing the church include people that were typically not on the fringes of Jewish society into the full life of the church. And honestly, all seven have Hellenized names. So this would also reassure those Hellenized widows that you will be cared for. But when we look at biblical leadership, we really do see that biblical leadership arises to meet tasks regardless of how mundane they are. And leaders rise from below, from the ranks of the church. They're not sent from above. And that ordination is the adaptation to church leadership needs. These men weren't just chosen, they were chosen and ordained to do the task. But this is where we get into Stephen's ministry. And this is the last part for this session, is Stephen's ministry. And this is one of those turning points in the book of Acts, starting in six, chapter six, verse eight, and going really into chapter eight, verse three. Where Stephen is one who's full of power and grace. And he's speaking at a freeman's synagogue, which is a Greek-speaking gathering of former slaves. And this is in Cilicia, which is a home region of Paul Saul. Stephen knew his scripture and he goes in and preaches a message that the temple must pass away and the law, and the law was but a stage to the gospel. And this steps on toes because two things that Jews held very precious were the temple and the law. And he was basically saying, these will go away. But they also are challenged, like they're challenged to refute Stephen's argument. But no one else felt the call to preach, even to refute him. And he was immediately arrested. And we get into the rest of his trial, the finish of chapter six, and we see that this was a conspiracy. He was arrested, smeared. They made up the charges. They bore false witness against him. And you can go back into Matthew, chapter twenty-six, verses fifty-five through sixty-eight, and compare Stephen's trial here to Jesus's. It's the same thing. And this happened because he was teaching that Jesus was the fulfillment of the law. He was preaching the truth and this was their reaction. But as you look at chapter seven, this is Stephen's sermon. It's the longest sermon in the entire book of Acts. And he's very clear on what his goals are, that God is not confined to one building because God by his nature cannot be imprisoned. He fulfill, shows that Jesus fulfills the Old Testament and points out their own hypocrisy accusing him of violating the law of Moses. And that's a big thing here. And we see this, actually, this fits prophetic model very well of, well, basically, he's recounting the his, the history of the Jewish faith through the Old Testament, starting with Abraham, then into Joseph, then into Moses. And I'm kind of breezing through this because it is very straightforward. That of basically the fact that Abraham took on the mantle to go. That he was a man of faith who didn't need the proof. He was a man of hope. He was ready to go. With Joseph, we have grace and wisdom. When you get to Moses, all that Moses gave up to do the will of God. And this is seen both in the Bible and also in the history of Josephus, about who Moses was. And all this tells us more about God, about how God was with Abraham, God was with Joseph, God was with Moses. And it wasn't just about one place and all this before the law. But as we look at what he does next, starting in verse thirty-seven, we start to see that Stephen condemns the Jews. He does, he condemned them for their repeated violation or repeated rebellions against God. Just read the Old Testament, you see it repeatedly. Condemned them for the amazing privileges they had and yet they still rebelled. They wrongly limited God instead of, that he was their God instead of the God of all the universe. And that they prosecuted the prophets and ultimately murdered the son of God. The big difference between what Stephen says and what Peter said comes to the fact that Peter gave them an act. He said, they did this in their ignorance. Stephen didn't even give that to them. He basically said, you're wrong. You rejected God's word, you killed the prophets. And then say, but you didn't know what you were doing. And basically, if you pick it up at verse fifty-four, the outcome was not in, in doubt at all. The only message they were going to have or sentence was death. But truth be told, they never actually convicted him by the law. This was basically, for the lack of a better way of saying it, a lynching. This was going to be extrajudicial. They did nothing by the book. But how he died is very important for us because in his death, he saw Jesus. His eyes were fixed to heaven, not to earth. To him, death was a gateway to return to Christ. And he was more than willing to follow in Christ's footsteps to get to the Father. And we see that he was at peace when this happened because basically, it's like they slept. And this is why he is considered the first Christian martyr. Because he did fully die for the faith. Because no one could ever say this was a just trial. Truth be told, a violated Roman law. But this is where we also get a change in what, in Acts. Because if you look at verse fifty-eight, the second half of it says, "And the witnesses laid down their garments at the feet of a young man named Saul." We're going to see later in Acts, Saul never forgot the stoning of Stephen. And what's interesting, if you look at verse sixty, "Lord, do not hold this sin against them." Saul, who became Paul, was basically the answer to Stephen's prayer at his martyrdom. When we look at this, Stephen is the martyr of the church. He's the example of the persecuted church. And Luke is defending him as his defender. And it is a reminder that we are to be bold, not silent in our faith. So that wraps up our session on chapters four through seven. The Zoom Bible study is Wednesday night. If you haven't already sent me your email address to be included, please do that. That link goes out Tuesday night. We have other options for in-person, both Wednesday out in the P.A. furnace area, but also in State College on Thursday. Now, next week, we continue looking at Acts, chapters eight through ten. And this is going to heavily focus on the shift of the church to the Gentile world and Paul's conversion and new mission. So hopefully, you got something out of this. And I may see you this week. And if you have any questions, please let me know and I will try to answer them the best I can.